Six forty six and I called to order this public hearing for the Cumberland County Department of Public Safety Construction of Tower-Based Wireless Communications Facility. This is a hearing to receive public comment on the request by Cumberland County Department of Public Safety located at sixteen oh one Rittner Highway to allow for the construction of a tower-based wireless communications facility to be used exclusively for emergency services. This was posted to the property May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three notifications were sent to property owners within a two-hundred-foot radius of the subject property also on the nineteenth of May this year. And it was advertised in Sentinel, May twenty-fourth and May thirty-one, two thousand twenty, twenty-three. Now, we have an applicant here. I don't believe we received any requests for party status from anyone, so the applicant can take it away. Attorney Gilroy.
Good evening. Hubert Gilroy, Martin Law Offices on behalf of Cumberland County with this application. It's a conditional use application for the transmission tower. It's not typical cell tower. It's only for emergency services, so it's not a co-locator-type thing that you've seen before with the, with the normal cell towers. The application went before the Borough Planning Commission and received a favorable recommendation. So with me tonight, I have two witnesses, and I can ask Doug Brim and Brian Hamilton, please stand to be sworn, both at the same time, save you some time.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the matter of proceeding? Thank you.
I'm going to ask Doug to come forward and identify himself, and he's just going to give you a brief explanation as far as what exactly we're building and where. And then Brian, who works with the county in the, in that vicinity, that arena, he's going to come up and identify himself and then give you some information as to why, perhaps if we hold questions until after you hear both of them speak, that might be, move things along a little bit more.
That works. Satisfactory? Okay. Mr. Brim?
Please first state your full name and your business address.
Douglas, Douglas Brim, Seventeen State Avenue, Carlisle.
And what is your profession?
I'm a professional land surveyor and president of Brim Levo Engineering Incorporated. We prepared the, the plan and the application.
Okay. Why don't you tell the council what you're proposing to do?
So last year, we were approached by Brian at county. We're actually doing a half a dozen of these towers up and down the valley, surveying and site plans. He approached us about this site to locate it on county land. So we did a survey, met with staff, showed them what we were doing. Mark and Jared came up with the plan that you're looking at. It's a hundred-by-hundred fenced-in area, one-hundred-and-ninety-five-foot tower for emergency services. It has a small control building next to it. That's it.
Can you describe lots of what the surrounding property is?
Yeah, and the neighborhood is all industrial. County's on the property. We have Syntec and Turner Hydraulics and Giant Foods and all manner of industrial buildings all around us back there, so.
Okay. You're good?
I think so.
Call this out. Brian, please state your full name and business address.
Brian Hamilton, One Courthouse Square, Carlisle, PA.
What is your business? What do you do?
I'm the Public Safety Technical Systems Manager.
Okay. Please indicate to the council what the nature of this tower is, why we're doing it, what it's going to do for us.
Sure. When we contracted with the radio vendor of choice, Motorola, they're the ones responsible for indicating to us where the tower sites will be placed to provide adequate coverage to provide, you know, their contractual agreement. And they chose this as one of the sites. So we moved forward with that, and it'll be for public safety use. It'll provide coverage to not only Carlisle Borough, the industrial district, and areas surrounding, and also, you know, some better in-building coverage that we don't, no, we don't have today.
Where else do we have towers or records?
Yes. In the current system, we have seventeen tower sites across the county. In the new system, we will have nineteen. So we're going up by two to be able to provide, you know, some better coverage for our first responders.
And just for the record, you mentioned you have a new contract for communications. Would you explain what's going on with that?
Yeah. So whenever you put a new radio system in, you know, you choose a vendor, that, that vendor, Motorola, is responsible for developing where the sites are going to be, like I mentioned, to provide the adequate coverage, along with, then, once we approve that, then we will order the infrastructure that goes in those sites, along with equipment down at the nine oh one center. And then following, we'll be testing and then training, and then we will entertain a good live date.
And this communication, equipment is consistent with all of the emergency services in the county, is that right?
That is correct.
They all have to use the same one?
Yes.
That's possibly everybody's mind, too, right?
It is. Yes.
No further questions?
Does counsel have any questions for either of the witnesses? Probably for Mr. Brim. I, I think in the, in the minutes from the planning commission meeting, the, the application indicates in a number of areas, it just says acknowledged. I think the minutes in the planning commission application reflected, I believe it was, was your statement, that acknowledged just means there will be compliance with that provision. That's, for this record, just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Okay.
We also have some that I just submitted, a little bit of area about some, they all apply. So they also, they were, I think, marked on that, but we weren't planning permission, but they did an explanation why.
Of course, those convictions did not relate to the stuff of the power type thing, which requires bonding to take it down. We're suggesting, you know, the county, they're operating, and they're not going to.
Right. Right. Okay. Any, any follow-up from counsel at all? Okay. That's all we have.
We just move for the admission of the application as in our exhibit, and we rest.
And admitted without objection. Thank you. Is there any, Mr. Hamilton, you can take it, see, thanks. Is there any public comment on this application? Okay, I see none, and I adjourn this hearing. Thank you. Let me write down. I was just going to announce, that was a, a public hearing. In about six minutes, we'll, we'll begin our, our regular meeting of council. Okay, the time is now seven o'clock. I called to order this June eighth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting. We will begin with a moment of silence, pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Hicks.
So, as many of you know, this week celebrates the seventy-ninth anniversary of the June sixth, nineteen forty-four day invasion. And also, since our last meeting, we've had a recognition of our fallen men and women in the service in Memorial Day, but I wanted to highlight what I think is probably our, our greatest hour, our greatest day. I had the privilege of, as I worked with a British Colonel in Afghanistan who allowed access to this place called Southwicks House, which is where General Eisenhower planned the invasion, where he made the last-minute decision to go forward. But across an entire wall is just a carve-out of handmade ships and maps, beautiful architecture, but it sort of belied the chaos and turmoil that was going to happen in the next twenty-four hours, a very poignant memory, but I would like to dedicate this, this month's remembrance to the fallen soldiers, Marines, airmen on June sixth, nineteen forty-four.
Madam Secretary, in the role, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
And Mayor Schultz?
Here. Next is an opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard, so if there's anybody who would like to speak to counsel on any issue of our government, you can come forward. Yes, Thompson. We'll need your name and address for the, for the record.
My name is Davis Tracy, and I live at eleven eighty-nine Myers Town Road in Gargers, Pennsylvania. I'm here to represent Dickinson College and more specifically, the Dickinson College Bluegrass Festival, which occurs the second Saturday in July annually, as it has done so for twenty-eight years. And so I would like to make comments when the agenda item comes up related to another festival wanting to schedule on that same day. Thank you.
Sir, if you, if you want to make comment now while you're up there, you can, you can go ahead and make comment, or, but if you prefer to do it right before the vote, you can do that.
I'll, I'll do it a later time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Be sure to call again. Any, anybody else who has any public comment? Okay. And do we have anybody by Zoom?
We do not.
Okay. Thanks. Moving on to the consent agenda, this is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and probably do not require additional discussion. It can be acted on by one motion in their current form if discussion is desired on any particular item. Any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is there any such request to remove any item on this consent agenda? Okay. Seeing none, I'll, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Mellon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. Any, well, there wouldn't be, be any comment on this. Any, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes, so that takes care of the items on the white pages of the agenda. Moving on to the regular agenda, there are no table continued recurring items. There are no reports from elected officials, reports from committees, and I want to take a bit out of order because we have, in particular, some, some county staff here, and, and we want to make sure they get home. We don't care so much about Attorney Gilroy. He can, he can hang with us all night. So we'll move to sustainability and community planning, item number two.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for those who are following, we'll swap the issues that we'll bring to forecounsel and do the second one first. So in view of the hearing, we just heard the public hearing we had at six forty-five, I move that council consider authorizing a conditional use for a tower-based wireless communications facility at sixteen oh one Rittner Highway in the I-one zoning district as permitted by Brim Levo Engineering Incorporated on behalf of Cumberland County Department of Public Safety.
Motion by Counselor Hicks to approve the conditional use by Cumberland County Department of Public Safety. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. Any, any comment? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Okay, thank you.
And my second and final issue is I move that council waive the preliminary plans and approve the final land development plan submitted by Prime AE Group on behalf of Rabbit Transit to develop a bus garage facility at sixteen oh one Rittner Highway.
Motion by Counselor Hicks to waive preliminary plans, approve the final land development plan submitted by Prime AE Group on behalf of Rabbit Transit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. Any discussion?
I have a couple of things that I wanted to address.
Okay.
So I did try to check with Jared beforehand, but I still am unsure requirements exactly or what, what we're able to make adjustments on, on this, but the basic couple of concerns that I have, I did speak with one of our planning commissioners, Steve Mayer, and he did bring up a few things. One being, and I, they're, they're, the planning commission comments are at the very bottom, kind of have to zoom in and out of this document, but one has to do with the parks. The fee in lieu of park or, or dedicating land to parks, it seems that one of the things put forward is that a retention base would be used as recreation, and I don't think that that's actually in the scope of what we think of as a park. I don't think that it would actually be used. And the other thing, and this was something I was actually wondering how we could engage the county, and so when I saw this came up, I thought it was a, actually a prime opportunity. Carlisle Construction Materials is directly adjacent, and with their new facility, they put in, and at least I mapped it on Google Maps, about a half-mile of sidewalk. So that area, which has up until now been very much unfriendly to pedestrians, seems like it's actually going in the right direction right now. There is no requirement to put a sidewalk in front of this, and at the corner of Industrial Avenue Street to the edge of this property, there is sidewalk on Industrial, but there is not a sidewalk in front of the county facility. It would connect directly to that half-mile of sidewalk on the Carlisle Construction. It also, our bike and pedestrian path connects to Industrial and then to Shearer. Right now, every, and I did also go through the Cumberland County Comprehensive Plan. There are items saying connect sidewalk facilities to bike and ped network where there was none, connects to, anyway, to help connect to the rail trail. So we do have our own paths, but any way that we can continue to envision how we can help people navigate, right now, anyone following that bike and ped path have to go from the north side to the south to come back around to the north. Over time, I understand that it's not there yet, but there's not that much left on that stretch of road. My sino is, Nysley is the beer distributor there, right? There's that section that doesn't necessarily have sidewalk, but the opportunity is here. So my thought is that when these possibilities come up, to make the ask to invest in these connections, I did also see that in the county planning commission did also note that one deciduous tree should be planted for each sixty feet of street frontage. I did see there are a couple of trees there. It looks like they're back a little bit, but if we could pull them up closer to the, the road, it also can help with speed of cars when they feel like it's not as wide, that there's some shade, and, and so there's some strategies we can use when we have these types of what seem like a very easy approval, but I do think that there's some opportunity that I would love for us to discuss. But there is a number, I mean, I, I won't read everything that's from the county planning commission, but there are multiple elements and in our own county, our, our own Cumberland County, or Carlisle Planning Commission, that all go to the, you know, pedestrian network to, to enhancing this and looking at these opportunities and trying to engage. So I guess the first question is, is it truly that they're, they're asking to use the retention pond as recreation instead of a fee? And is there a possibility for us to require them or ask them to implement the sidewalk?
So before, I should, probably should have made sure, I think they're, they were going to attend by Zoom. Are they, are they logged in? Oh, Jared is. Okay. So if one of the representatives from Rabbit Transit would like to, to address Deputy Mayor's comments, it'd be helpful.
Good evening. This is Steve Garland with Prime AE. With me is Jeffrey Gerald, also Prime AE, he's the architect. I'm the civil site engineer, and I see Jared Wolston is also available, the, with, with the borough. The, the county comments, we, we provided a response letter that was accepted. We tried to address everything on the revision to the plans for the planning commission. The comment regarding the street trees along Rittner Highway, that was an exist, that's an existing situation that we felt was not part of our plans. I'm not sure what Jared's thoughts on our response to that was. We're not building any street frontage. We are adding twenty-two trees to our site for landscaping. And yesterday, we did meet with Rabbit Transit regarding the recreational area, and we are discussing with them the fee in lieu option for that. Did I misspeak there, Mr. Gerald?
No, that is correct.
So, so the, the intent is not to use the basin as, as recreational area, but instead do it to provide a, potentially provide a fee in, in lieu?
Yes, that is correct.
And, and that's, that's being considered, but it hasn't been determined yet?
That is correct as well. Yes, we are discussing, we're in conversations with Rabbit Transit and Bureau of Public Transportation.
Okay. And, and if Rabbit Transit determines not to provide a recreational fee in lieu, what, what is, what's Plan D?
So the, the, and I know when you say detention basin, that everybody goes to a very deep, ugly situation. The basin out at this site is very shallow, it's very flat, it looks like a, a yard or a golf course. It's wide, it's flat, it's all grass. We were thinking if that could be used as a rec, as an active or passive green space in recreation with potentially, you know, we've talked about a bench, Jared and I've just, I threw out an idea, a couple of soccer goals. It's big enough, you could even put a disc golf metal catcher, so the employees in the area could go out and stretch their legs and kick a ball, throw a frisbee, and have some open-air recreation close to where they are working.
Yeah, I guess part of this is to, to waive, like, the plan, and so the further discussion on this plan, correct? Like, the, if we approve tonight?
There's, there's a waiver of the preliminary plan, is that?
Right.
Yeah, so that would be, that'd be typical, because what they, because you're not going, you wouldn't see a different plan going from preliminary to final and something like this.
Right. I guess that's my, there's some things that are still, since this one doesn't seem to have, like, a concrete answer. I, I mean, most places have some sort of green space. Is it actually used? You know, is it activated? Is it thought, you know, out, across the street from where I live is the new factoring apartments, they put a, you know, it's between residential, but there's a playground, right? It is actively used. It was thoughtfully put in to make use of the space for the, the folks that are around there. And I, I mean, it sounds like you have some ideas, but it's more of, I guess, I'm always thinking about it as not just this plan, but how we would approach it when other plans are asking similar things. So to not have a fee, but also just have a place that ends up being mowed and is not an active or, or a used space, you know? So those are the kinds of things I, I like to think about, thoughtfully planning out those spots, and if it's not in the, you know, the, the plan, then that's why the fee in lieu exists in, in my mind. And when it comes to the sidewalk, that's, I mean, that is something that I think could be actually used, and that's why I'm trying to find out if that's something that could be discussed as part of this.
Why, why don't we start, well, sort of circle back to start here? Jar, Jared, you're, you're on?
Yeah.
Dude, what's, what's our deadline act on this application?
Um, that's a good question. I'm not sure. I could, I'll go back and look at when they submitted to be sure. I mean, as, as far as the recreation land goes, that's still, it's still outstanding because of the county's comments, and one of the draft conditions of approval is to address the county's comments. And there's, a, a, as was explained to the applicant at Planning Commission, I think what a lot of people do is they end up submitting the, you know, payment in lieu, because to either do a public dedication or a private dedication of land, you know, set aside land for recreation, the applicant would have to do that in consultation with the Parks and Rec Director, Planning Commission, and Borough Council would then have the opportunity to approve it.
All right, that, and that-
There, there are a few things that have to happen, but it's not sort of pro forma.
And that's, right, that seems like more than a, a technical condition, and, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to conditionally approve something that, that has something that substantive outstanding. But I, I think it's worth continuing the discussion on the other, on the other items and maybe make some, some headway here. So, so Deputy Mayor brought up the, the sidewalks, and a preference to have, have sidewalks installed instead of the, the fee, fee in lieu, and I think that's sort of a, I mean, we've, we've been talking about making the borough pedestrian-friendly for, for years. Is, is there some reaction from the applicant on that?
I think anything beyond, you know, what's in our, I guess, our original scope with Bureau of Public Transportation would need to be taken back to the Bureau for discussion.
Okay.
For sidewalks, Deputy Mayor Landis reached out about sidewalks. My read of the code is that sidewalks wouldn't apply to this unless Borough Council, under their authority in section two twenty-three dash forty-three, deemed sidewalks necessary by resolution. And as far as sidewalks as an alternative, that's, that's maybe possible because sidewalks aren't required. That, that recreation standard in the ordinance specifically says that sidewalks can't be an alternative if they're required. So in this case, they're not required. So maybe if, if I'm picking up what the mayor's putting down, maybe that would be the alternative, but I, I guess the, the right procedure would be to return to the applicant. It sounds like they don't have the authority to approve that tonight.
Right. So this, this seems like a ta, the table to me at, at this point. And I have, I, I don't, you know, I only have what's attached to our, our briefing summary, but it appears that the, the application was last revised on April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the files, and they held a, a public outreach meeting on four twenty-four, twenty-three, so the application was submitted after that date. So if, if you look at the ninety days that council has, I believe you still have time available for, at the next meeting to take action.
Right. Okay.
I mean, I do appreciate having a little bit of leeway on this. I mean, I, I just think that this makes sense with what we're focusing on as a borough, and especially with the fact that the adjacent property has recently installed a half-mile. I think that I counted about a thousand feet, maybe, in front of this property, but I, I think that, you know, with our climate action, with our planning documents, like, this aligns perfectly with it, and I think that this is an opportunity. So I would, I would agree to table it, as long as it's not keeping, you know, anyone from being able to move forward, but I think that this is an important element.
Right. And it, the application sounds incomplete at this stage. Right, and it, the application sounds incomplete at this stage anyway. So is that, you want to make a motion to table?
Would, is there any discussion first of all? All right, I would like to make a motion, a motion to table this plan until we can get more information.
Motion tabled by the Deputy Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And the item is, is tabled until our subsequent regular meeting of council.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. Next up, budget and finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening. I move that Borough Council ratify the Borough Manager's execution of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four contracts with Diesel Direct to purchase the following thirty-five thousand seven hundred gallons of gasoline at a fixed contract price of two dollars and fifty-three point four zero cents per gallon and forty-six thousand gallons of diesel at a fixed price of two dollars and ninety-nine four eight cents per gallon.
Motion by Counselor Stewie for the purchase of gas, gasoline for the borough, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Cramsey, any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee report this evening.
Thank you. Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item tonight. Make a motion that Borough Council may consider a Borough of Carlisle Community Development Block Grant Shop Steading Loan and authorize the mayor to execute the appropriate loan documents to provide thirty-five thousand dollars in CDBG program year twenty twenty-two funds to Mr. Jacob Lauer, Eclipse Gaming Cafe, fifty-seven West Pomford Street, Carlisle. The loan shall reflect a twenty-five-year amortization, two percent interest rate, with a balloon payment at seven years. Approval shall be subject to the Borough Solicitor's satisfactory review and approval of said loan documents and provisions outlined by staff.
Motion by Counselor Cramsey for the approval of a shop steadying loan for Eclipse Gaming Cafes, your second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Perry, and I don't, I don't want to steal an opportunity, Rebecca, to give him a presentation if he'd like to, so. You, absolutely, God, we, we, you need to throw some puns in there too.
Well, if you were to visit me downstairs in the garden level, you would see in the break room a table that's covered with games and puzzles. You remember three years ago how we were all hunkered down, everyone at home and gathered round, and we were playing games and doing puzzles and things? Well, that was just a fad. Board games are back, and they're back in a very big way. Jacob Lauer is twenty-seven years old, be one of our youngest entrepreneurs here in downtown Carlisle. He's a chef at Camp Hill's popular, very popular brewhouse Grill, but he's had his own game plan.
Never disappoints.
To open his own game place and cafe. No need to take a break in the action, to visit, you know, the other places you need to visit, order on the spot, never missing a turn. The Eclipse Gaming Cafe will open at fifty-seven West Pomford Street in the former Spoons and earlier Gaia location, offering casual, light fare, soups, salads, sandwiches, paninis, snacks, unique beverages, non-alcoholic beverages. And here you can play, you can buy, you can swap, you can trade all kinds of games, board and card games. You can join a group, join a tournament, plan an event there, plan a meeting there, Richard will be there, he's a gamer. Have a council retreat there, all kinds of things, a party, all, all sorts of things. Uh, and schedule an event, you could have cosplay there as well. They will be targeting the fourteen to twenty-five market, which, but of course, everybody's welcome. I'll be there. All are welcome for lunch, for dinner, for gaming or not, it's up to you. That's board games, card games, and game-related sales of action figures, costumes, props, all sorts of things and more. There's seating for forty inside, and outside, of course, we have additional seating and a room for other types of games. The outside seating is pure gold in the summer months. You'll see it going down High Street or, or Hanover Street. You see a lot of people out in the course that invites other people. And there's never been a more convenient place in terms of parking because you have the municipal lot on one side, a door down. A few doors down on the other, you have the Pomford Street Garage. But we expect many people will come to Eclipse Gaming Cafe from the neighborhoods. There'll be walkers who are coming there, and Jake and Tiffany happen to live on South Pitt Street, so they're part of that neighborhood. You probably read about the opportunity to offer therapeutic gameplay at Eclipse. That's perhaps a new term to you and would be a new addition to our downtown offerings, but it's something that we know is needed. You read a lot about mental health issues these days, and again, would serve the underserved in a very unique and help- helpful way. Tiffany Landis is a therapist counselor at Mock Maze, which is next door to Eclipse. They'll be open daily, except Tuesdays, from eleven till nine, and will start this summer, July or August. I know they're anxious to get in, and now I saw the, let's say, August then, okay? Because they have to order things, okay? With your, your financing, they need to order things, and we're still having some supply chain issues along that front. This request is for thirty-five thousand dollars in CDBG funds from twenty twenty-two for the purchase of equipment, fixtures, and furnishings. The loan is a two percent interest rate, amortized over twenty-five years with a balloon at seven, at seven years. The shop steadying loan will be a third lien position behind two mortgages on the home, one from cross-country, and one is a HELOC through PNC Bank. The mortgagers securing the loan will be Jake, Tiffany, and David Landis. In addition to that, there'll be a personal guarantee from Jake Lauer and liens on all of the equipment, fixtures, and furnishings. There'll be one full-time job that's created at that location within two years of settlement, and we expect that'll be the end of the, the month. You've heard me talk a little bit about how hot the food and beverage sector is, and that continues, that's been going on for a number of years, uh, predated COVID, very, very hot. Retail, not as much, maybe reasons for that. But what's trending now is experiential. So we look around Carlisle, we see the theater, we see the history tours, we see the parades, the downtown events, the theater, the escape rooms, and the coming axe-throwing venue on North Hanover Street. These are all unique experiences, and they'll have a unique option and a unique experience as well, plus food and drink right at that location. So you don't need to leave and think about coming back. We don't want you to escape, we'll keep you right there. So my question to you is, are you game? We welcome any questions that you might have, and always appreciate, uh, your continued support for downtown program services, our community and business development.
Thank, thank you, Rebecca. Any questions? Okay.
I'm excited for it. I, 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 I'm intrigued to know what your favorite games are. You don't have to tell me right now, but, but yes, I, I will happily play and I will try to enlist them to come too.
Thanks, Rebecca, and I'll, I'll just add a comment. I'm fully supportive of this. I think we as council here a lot, um, as council members from folks, um, we do a great job across the borough with our economic development, our parks and escape park. Um, but I think one of the areas we hear often is, you know, what can young kids do outside, outside of outside activities? Um, so I think this, this fits a need, and, and thank you, Jacob. It's, it's cool to have young, um, business owners in the borough. I actually know some folks who are taking their kids. I think there's a, a shop in Mechanicsburg that does a similar thing. So instead of folks having to drive to Mechanicsburg, we'll have it, have it right here. Thanks.
Any other comment? There's been a motion, a second, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Nay. The motion passes. Thank you.
And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cramsey. Parks and Recreation.
I move that council enter into an agreement with the Carlisle Area Pickleball Association to establish and construct four pickleball courts in place of an existing tennis court at Latour Park. The Carlisle Area Pickleball Association has provided the necessary documents to show proof of sufficient funds to pay contractors and all labors and materials necessary for the project.
Counselor Mellon makes motion to enter into an agreement with Carlisle Area Pickleball Association. Is there a second? Oh, that's my committee, sorry. Second, I do that every couple of months. I'll second that motion. Is there any, any discussion?
I'll just add again, fully supportive of this, um, as, as a new guest of the Latour Park within the last two years and to see the ducks. Um, it, it's nice to walk by the pickleball courts, I always grab it, um, on the weekends, on weekdays. So I think the, the association has a great job, Parks and Rec has done a great job, so I'm fully on board with this, makes sense.
Any other pickleball lovers? Yeah, okay. I'm sure you are, though. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Mellon. Public Safety. I move that council authorize the closure of the first block of Moreland Avenue on July first, two thousand twenty-three from eight AM to eleven AM in the Moreland Elementary School area for the two thousand twenty-three Summer Fair. And the minutes will reflect one word for Summer Fair, uh, five K walk and run. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Next, I move that council temporarily restrict parking at the parking meters in the Pomford Street parking lot on July seventh, two thousand twenty-three from eight AM until midnight to support an event at the Carlisle Theater. Approval is contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Next, I move that council approve a special events application and street closure as well as lifting of the sidewalk coordinates for the annual Amani Festival to be held on Saturday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-three from six AM to six PM. The event is to take place on the first two blocks of West High Street and the first block of North and South Pitt Streets. Approval shall be contingent upon the applicant, applicant receiving PennDOT approval, receipt of a valid certificate of liability insurance form naming the Borough of Carlisle and PennDOT as additional insureds, and reimbursing the Borough of Carlisle one hundred percent of variable costs and ten percent for the fixed costs incurred by the borough. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hicks, and I know there's, there's comment on this item, Mr. Tracy, if you want to come forward to the, to the podium.
Thank you. This is, uh, this date of July eighth is the second Saturday in July. Dickenson College has had a Bluegrass Festival on the second Saturday of July for twenty-eight years. And when we do our festival, if it's running alone, there are significant challenges to parking and for people finding the festival if, from out of town. We have people attending the festival from Southern Virginia to Northern New Hampshire. And we are successful because we have a simple goal. We try to provide excellent bluegrass and old-time string band music to the public for free and food and the space. That's all that we provide. We presently have about four thousand people in attendance. It's quite a challenge for just that number of people to find a place to park if the Bluegrass Festival alone is occurring on the second Saturday of July. Uh, we are not partnered with any other festival, and we have not sought to do so. The Amani Festival has represented their festival as one that has merged, that's a quote, with bluegrass on the grass. And to merge, well, that means two, two people or two organizations join to form one entity. This is not the case. We are a separate entity. And the representation thereof has made it quite confusing to many of the people who wanted to be vendors at the Amani Festival. So they, I've been contacted by vendors from the Amani Festival, or who want to be a, a vendor there, and a- asked, since your bur- you, uh, the festival has merged with you, where should we set up? Because we are not receiving any responses from the Amani Festival. And I said, you'll have to check with the Amani Festival. I think we are successful because we have generous donations from the public. We have a very small staff, a generous contribution from the college, and our mission is simple. We just want to provide music, access to that for, for people who come from this county and many others. And we know from last year that while it is possible for two festivals to occur on the same day, it's a market challenge to anyone who wants to find a place to park and attend either event. So I would ask if you are, the council is planning to authorize this this year that you consider for the benefit of the community as well, particularly the Carlisle community would benefit from two separate dates for festivals of the magnitude that the Bluegrass Festival and the Amani Festival are. Do you have any questions of me about the challenges of managing a festival?
Any, any questions from council?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment, and I, I agree with you, there are challenges. Um, well, and especially because of where Dickenson is located, and people do try to find parking spaces. So if there's two festivals that are happening at the same time and streets are shut down, I can't imagine how inconvenient that's going to be for a lot of people. So, I mean, like I said, I didn't have a question, just a comment.
Thank you.
I've planned festivals before, so I understand what you're saying. I do.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's very accurate. We also heard from our vendors last year who are only food vendors. We don't, we don't have any, anyone purveying any items other than, than food. And they expressed their dismay that they, they would like to have been at the Amani Festival, but they can't be at the Amani Festival if they're at the Bluegrass Festival. So they, they, they lose a bit this way too. But I really think that, that, that the town would benefit from separate dates, and I implore you to consider that in the future.
I think, yeah, yeah, and I, I do think, I mean, I don't think, I know that typically it's in May. Um, is that at least as long as I've been in town? And it, and Amani occurred, I, I remember during finals week, week for me during law school. It was nice to kind of walk out into that after feeling brain dead, um, from finals. But, uh, Counselor Stewie, you, you have a comment?
Yeah, well, I just had a question as to whether, um, I mean, this is obviously the second year that Amani, that the individuals organizing in the Amani Festival are, uh, planning to try to have it the same day as Bluegrass and Aggressive. They reached out to your organization at all to discuss, or have you reached out to them? Uh, I, I guess, has there been any attempts to communicate one way or the other, um, as to why those decisions have been made and how to coordinate or ma- maybe how to plan things?
Last year, I was approached by Tim Bard and another gentleman asking, did I think it would be a good idea to have the Amani Festival the same day as the Bluegrass Festival? And I said, I don't think it's a good idea. And they went ahead. This year, I've heard nothing from them. And the only way I knew that they were planning on the July eighth date was I got, uh, there was something on Facebook. And on their Facebook page, if, is there someone from Amani here? Well, the, it's, the way it's represented, there's pictures of, of the entrance to Dickenson College on their webpage. And they use the term merge. And, uh, and I try, I have tried to reach them by email and got no response. So, you know, I don't even know anyone who's in charge of that festival. I played that festival with the bluegrass band years ago, but I, I don't know anyone presently involved in that. but I I don't know anyone presently involved in that.
Can I bring up a question? I know we tabled something earlier tonight. I see, so this is for July eighth. We have a council workshop um July fifth. And and just, just so we're clear, the Borough doesn't approve or disapprove of the event and the street is through PennDOT. Um, so this would just be for the sidewalks. Is there any downside of us waiting till that workshop meeting, let letting Amani go through their process if they want to, or letting some kind of conversation happen to see if they'd be willing to move to a different day? I, I'm just throwing that out there for discussion. I don't know if if we don't, I guess my question is if we don't uh approve the form for the sidewalks this evening, what, what repercussions would that have?
And I, I was tossing around the same, same issue. And and without having somebody from Amani here, it's hard, hard to understand what that may be. I mean, we'd be pushing, potentially pushing an approval for the discussion off to our, our workshop, which is July fifth, maybe? Yeah, um, so just the, the week, you know, preceding that. Councilor Mellon?
Um, I'd just like to say, we already did approve this earlier this year for May. Um, and there was, I think, we've seen very poor planning on the part of the Amani Festival to pull off their annual May Festival. We haven't seen any evidence that they're doing any better job now for the July eighth event than they did for May, especially given the fact that they haven't even been in contact with the Bluegrass. So I, I'd be inclined to, to not approve it and, and ask them to revisit, perhaps holding off for a year for the festival to try again for a better event next year.
I did see, um, so I'm, I don't know if I'm, if I like the Amani Festival and that's how come I'm seeing some of their stuff in my feed. But I did see about a week or so ago that they did have on there um where if you wanted to be a vendor, they put a link, I guess, to like a forum or something to go in and say that you wanted to be a vendor. I didn't go through and check any comments. I don't know if anybody commented at that point. So I don't know. But they did on their Facebook page say that it was going to be in coordination with the Bluegrass. So I assumed that it was going to be a joint thing because that's what they said on their page.
Understandably, you'd think that.
Yeah. Um, I, I honestly, I mean, we love to see the Amani Festival, but again, it has been very hard to reach them. Um, and at this point, I mean, how do you reach them? If they're not answering their, uh, the comments on their Facebook page, which they haven't been great at either. I have to agree with Kate. It's not that I don't want to see the Amani Festival happen, but I agree.
Um, I will say uh, um, you know, I, I guess this can also go to us as a council and Borough um trying to help facilitate these plans as they go along. But they did sort of immediately post out this date without sending in an updated application to us, without um actually getting the approval. So it was um sort of almost immediately after they canceled because of poor planning. Now, last year it was because of rain. And so uh I can understand there was maybe a, a different situation. Um, I do also see on their Facebook page that the event is listed to go till seven PM, but we are approving till six PM. So again, like, there's just, those are small discrepancies, but also like not, not exactly, like making sure that everything is in line. So those are just my comments.
I would add uh that last year uh Chief Tarol Landis heard my request that, that uh West High Street stay open from West Street to Newville. And he, he said that that, he, he'd make sure that that happened because the Amani folks wanted to set up vendors out to College Street and presented that as though that would be an, an advantage to the participants or the attendees. And well, it might have been, but it, it would have been a disadvantage to the vendors that who pay us to, to participate. We don't make money on the festival. We make ends meet. And we're lucky if we end up in the black, which we have.
You know, I know these applications go through and I, you know, have the names of the applicants and their phone numbers on the application. Um, I know at some point, Mr. Snyder um and Lieutenant Latchall were part of the conversation with, with Mr. Bard. Is there anything from the discussions we've had that would help us out tonight? Or, yeah, that's, I figured that was the answer. That's a no. Okay. Um, okay, well, there's, there's a motion and a second. Um, does, do we have sort of a consensus where we're going, it seems, with this? Okay, then I'll, I'll call the question.
Before you call it, but um, can you summarize what you think the consensus is for me?
Uh, I, I think council is prepared to, to deny the application.
Okay, with, with um any um avenue for Amani to reengage for a different date or?
Well, it would just deny this application that's before us for, for July eighth. So if they wanted to reapply, they could. Um, we could, I suppose we'd give them the option of tabling this. And but, I mean, they're, they're, they'd just be updating the application that they provided as it is anyway. So it's almost six of one, half dozen of the other. I mean, they're, they're, they just changed, probably just changed the date and maybe changed the time um to reflect whatever their actual plans are. I mean, this is, this is why it's so important. I know I'm lecturing to no one right now, but it's important for people when they have items on the agenda to, to make an effort and show up so that questions can be answered. Um, so that's, that's a little, little frustrating this evening. Yep. Okay, yeah, sure. Wa- Wanda, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead. You have, you have some comment?
Yes, I want to comment on the Amani Festival. Um, last year, it was scheduled, to my knowledge, in May, the normal date that was held. But because of the weather, it was rescheduled to the July date. And that's where the conflict, to my knowledge, came from. That the May date was bad weather, so it was rescheduled.
Right, yeah, that's, that's my recollection too. You don't, you don't have, that's just your recollection from the public. You don't have any involvement with Amani.
I don't have any organization input at all.
Yeah.
This is just observation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, just, there's a question. So I mean, if we were to deny the application, um, would they still then be able to reapply for this date at the workshop meeting? Or would that not provide them sufficient time? They would almost, by, by denying this, almost by default, need to select a different date to attempt to apply by, basically?
That's, that's an answer. We don't know without them being here to answer it tonight.
Fair point.
Yeah.
Just, so my assumption is, I, i- is there any contingency that we deny this and they still go forward with a very different looking Amani Festival?
Some, something that doesn't take place on the, on the public streets and sidewalks. I mean, that's.
I mean, I, I, I can't speak for them, wish somebody, but I mean, conceptually, they may have enough invested that they would be needing to do some things very differently. And I just want to acknowledge that that might be a possible.
Right, so if they had it somewhere on, you know, if they had, could, I, I think the schedule out at Fairgrounds is, would be clear that weekend. If hypothetically, if they wanted to have it held out there, they could do that on private, private property.
I, just to follow up on that, if they had PennDOT approval, could they go ahead with High Street and just not use the sidewalks?
Just for the sake of uh discussion, the PennDOT approval takes some time. And uh Ms. Hunter is actually correct that last year, Bluegrass was scheduled and we had to try to broker a deal. That's why she spoke to me and tried to, tried to get them to fit everything in there. Um, so I don't know if you push it back, if we get approval from PennDOT for the Amani Festival uh once, on July eighth. If you don't approve it.
And, and then you need us to close the streets.
Yes.
It's not just the, the, the approval from PennDOT. They also need us to close the streets. Yeah, oh, absolutely, sure.
Do you need to come up to the mic actually, so we can hear? Can you come up to the mic so we can be?
Yeah, the, the mic there is sort of picking up, but it's going to be easier. We have some folks on Zoom. They might not be able to hear that well from there.
Thank you.
As I come to the meeting, uh, pri- prior, the May uh Amani was scheduled in May. And uh, if I recall, coming down, coming down uh High Street in uh like Friday, uh, there were all no, no parking prohibited signs there. So uh, to approve this, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how this is calculated, but the Borough uh would pick up hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs. So who put up all those signs? The Borough must have spent some money putting up all those signs. And did, did Amani, did we get uh, uh money back for that, for doing that? So what, same with uh, uh, that they don't seem to be too organized. They, they canceled it like right then. And I'm just wondering, what, what, did we get any money back for the work that the Borough did on, in May?
Uh, public work staff uh puts out those no parking signs.
I imagine we haven't gotten payment for this, that, that, that fixed cost portion. I'm correct, yeah, okay.
I just wanted, so my concern is that we deny it, we end up still with a festival that's not very well organized and may be disruptive in ways that we don't quite understand yet. That's my only concern.
Well, they, they won't have the streets closed, so I'm not sure how they, they do that. Um, they won't have, they won't have authority to go, go forward from us. I don't know if they perceive PennDOT approval at this point.
I don't know if it's come through yet, but I could find out that, that, I don't know if it's come through yet, but it, it usually takes some time.
Yeah, and, and I imagine PennDOT, if PennDOT were informed tomorrow morning that we, we did not approve it, they likely would not.
Do we know that the application to PennDOT has been made, though? It has been made. Because I believe that last year for the May date, it was put in late and we had to help push it through.
Okay, let me come back to Mr. Tracy. Because I think you're, the way you frame your, your conclusions was like, please think about this in the future. Um, that's a suggestion that you live with it as it is this year. You prefer not to. Um, and just, yeah, so. So does that, sort of clarifying that, does that change any minds here?
The Amani Festival has been approved by PennDOT.
Oh, it has been, okay.
I mean, it doesn't change my vote. Um, I'm still very disappointed in the um lack of organization um on the part of the festival. But um, you, you know, I'm only one vote, so.
So I, the, the thought behind the festival, I think, is great, right? And supportive of that, I'm, the optimist in me wants to figure out a way for us to figure it out and make it work. But I think we're kind of constrained by our meeting schedules, which worries me. But in a perfect world, I would love to see them come to us and offer another date.
Fest- festival, the, the, you know, is, is uh, the definition of the word is, is peace. Should have a more peaceful process here.
Just to clarify, PennDOT's already approved this. I- is there any real, I mean, in, in terms of our approval, we could still, in theory, table this and then take it up in um July with the ask that individuals from Amani be present to answer some of these questions. Would, is that correct? Will that still be an option? Uh, because, I mean, they, they wouldn't, or is PennDOT's approval kind of contingent also on our approval? Do we, do we know that, or has it just kind of been approved?
I think the one, the, the other element is they do have to hire special fire police. They have to hire other people. And I guess that's the one very, you know, important variable. If it's not concrete and we could, but I mean, my, the other point to, to counter that also is that they did cancel at the last minute and they did have PennDOT approval back in May too. So it's not, you know, it, it is, if we would decide to, to deny it today, then it's at least giving more notice to PennDOT that it wasn't needed. But I believe that they would have already had PennDOT approval in May and then canceled. I don't, I don't know what that whole process is, so.
Back to Councilor Stewie's question though, if, I mean, if we tabled this and took it up at a workshop, um, you know, we don't, obviously don't know the ramifications of, of, I mean, play that out and we decide that their answers are not satisfactory at the workshop and we're, we're going to deny it. Now we're denying it just a few days before the, the festival, although they canceled it right, right before the last time it was scheduled. So, or postponed it. So maybe that doesn't, wouldn't, wouldn't affect them all that much. They'd just look for another time in, you know, August or September or whenever.
So I don't want to set a precedent, but have we ever waived the sidewalk ordinance um retroactively? As I'm thinking, as we're trying to work through this? And if it gets to the point where Bluegrass says, all right, we got to live with it this year and Amani has their stuff together. If we don't take action tonight, it still rolls on. And then on the thirteenth, could we come back and say we're waiting?
Yeah, I think we've rat, we've ratified special events applications after the, after the fact, yeah.
I, I'd like to make a motion to table this issue until the July workshop.
Okay, Councilor Hicks makes a motion to table. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilor Ramsey. I'll call the question. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And the motion passes from an aye vote, um, six to one. So we'll have a couple table, well, one table light of the workshop.
Just to click, the motion to table has been approved.
Right.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that was the only motion that was called, the question was called, yeah.
Right.
So, okay.
I have a concern that I don't know that it's for this body to address, but the representation on the Facebook page of this being a uh a merged event and with pictures of the college, I, I don't know that I'll get a response if I uh write to whomever I wrote to today. It's, it's a, it's not a person, it's a, a title. So I would ask that if you're communicating with them, that, that they uh make clear that their festival is, is uh longstanding.
Right, no, they, well, theoretically, they'll be here on July fifth to, to answer council's questions.
Would it be appropriate for us to advise the Borough Manager to try to get a sit-down meeting between them and Bluegrass before that?
Uh, yeah, absolutely.
I would like to go into that meeting knowing either everyone came to the table or folks didn't. That would, I think, influence my, my decision.
Right, yeah, they're obviously going to need a heads up. Let's see, let's see the Assistant Borough Manager jot his notes. They'll follow up, okay.
Yeah, because my question is, what if they don't show up till the July fifth? Like, what if you can't get in touch with anybody? That they don't respond, because they're not, they haven't responded to vendors. So what if they don't respond and what if they don't show up till July fifth?
Well, we'll have another vote.
Okay.
They're going to have a very different looking festival than they imagined. Probably what's going to happen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the end of our committee business. Um, so wild and crazy night. Uh, municipally speaking, which which isn't, isn't saying much. Um, so next, is that any new business? So it's another opportunity for, for public comment. Is there any uh public comment now that you've, you've sat through all of this? Okay, anything by Zoom? Okay, reports from, from council members of staff. Councilor Mellon? Councilor Stewie?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Schultz. So um, as you all know, last Wednesday um at our workshop meeting, we essentially had a follow-up meeting on our strategic planning process and we came up with a revised vision statement. Um, after mulling that over a little bit, I have some proposed changes to the vision statement, which are essentially just stylistic changes to it as opposed to changing the actual substance. So just as a reminder for those of us who were here and for anyone who wasn't, uh, the vision statement that Just as a reminder, for those of us who were here and for anyone who wasn't, uh, the vision statement that we came up with last week was Carlisle, Pennsylvania. Where our history inspires innovative ideas to create a safe, inclusive and welcoming community. Where everyone has the opportunity to thrive and make a difference. Um, in. Changing that, um, what, what I had revised it to is, in Carlisle, Pennsylvania. Our history inspires innovative ideas that create a safe, inclusive and welcoming community. Where every individual can thrive and make a difference. And, um, if everybody's okay, I'd just kind of like to at least provide a little context on. Some of those changes and then kind of get everyone's feedback. Um, so at the very beginning, I changed Carlisle, P A, colon. Where to just in Carlisle, comma, uh, mainly to eliminate using where twice and also, I guess, to eliminate using the colon. Um, and then neck, the next change, um, after the words innovative ideas. I changed the word two to that, uh, because the way it originally read to me was kind of ambiguous as to whether it is our history that is. Creating a safe, inclusive and welcoming community, or whether it is the innovative ideas that are doing so. I felt like changing it to that. Puts the emphasis more so on the innovative ideas, creating the safe, inclusive and welcoming community. Um, and then I changed the word everyone to every individual. Um, at our discussion last week, there was kind of some back and forth on. Which of those two we wanted to go with. Um, it seemed that. There was more support around every individual being more inclusive, um, whereas everyone is more concise. Uh, so I, I changed it back to every individual because I personally was more in favor of that and I think that there was some general support for that. Um, and then finally I changed, uh, has the opportunity to, to can, um, just because I, I think that makes it more concise and kind of. Conveys the same, same meaning. So, uh, again, the revised statement that I came up with is, in Carlisle, our history inspires innovative ideas. That create a safe, inclusive and welcoming community, where every individual can thrive and make a difference. Um, so I just kind of wanted to see what. Everyone's thoughts and, and feedback were on that. Um, I will share that, uh, the Borough Manager bounced this, uh. To Raftellus, our consultant, and they were generally okay with the revised changes, cuz as I mentioned, it's kind of the same substance, just changing the style. Um, I guess one other thing is I did add a comma after inclusive because I'm a fan of the Oxford comma, so. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to see what everyone's thoughts were on, on that and if you all would be okay with. You know, moving forward that revised statement as opposed to the initial one we had last week.
And I expect no debate on the Oxford comma, cuz it's, you know, clearly the right choice. Any, any comments?
I think it's great. I, I'm, I'm glad you brought individual back. Um, everyone just sort of collects everyone in this room, but every individual, like, makes you feel seen. And I think that that's a, a key thing that makes it uniquely Carlilian, so.
Um, I, I think it's good. Um, I wanted to make sure, I really felt very strongly about inclusive being in there. I know how some people feel about that word, but it's important to me, um, that it is in there and that it is said. You know, we are making sure that we include every single person that comes and lives here in Carlisle, so. It's, it's good with me, as long as that was in there, I was, I was fine with it. But no, I, I think it's good.
Anything else? Okay, any objection to, to passing that on to Raftellus by unanimous consent? Okay, we, we shall make it so. Thanks. Thank you all for indulging my grammar nipping. Counselor Ramsey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing tonight, um, wanted to quickly shout out, um, our Borough staff. We, we have the best staff around. Um, and I always, you know, marvel at local government and how you can't plan for things. Um, the past few days with our air quality issues. Um, I don't know how you planned for that, um, but the, the Borough did a great job, um, communicating to the public. Had to make some hard decisions, but I think the right decisions to make everybody, um, safe. So, oh, as always, appreciate your work. Thanks, thanks for everything.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Thank you. Um, I just have a couple of quick items. Um, uh, on Saturday, uh, there will be, um. The shelling of Carlisle reenactment downtown and, um, because the mayor is already, uh, elsewhere, I will play. Mayor with some brief remarks, I guess, at the beginning, um, but I'm just.
Appropriate remarks?
Appropriate remarks, that is correct, yes, very appropriate.
I'm going now.
But I am really excited about this because, uh, we don't really have, um, you know, Gettysburg, it's all the fanfare, but we have a lot of history. And we have some great folks here who love to tell the stories and, uh, again, it's uniquely Carlisle story, so, um. I'm excited to see how they pull it all together. Um, today we did meet with the Lincoln Cemetery Committee and so we, uh, are discussing further about. Um, work to be done over there. We, we worked with the Historical Society, also looking at, um, Union Cemetery, cuz both of those, um, have a, a large history. That we wanna, um, ensure that we're, um, doing it right. Um, so more about that and also we're still looking for, um. Descendants that want to help us and help inform us on how we go about, uh, you know, preserving that history. Um, and the last thing is, uh, I am a fan of our street tree, uh, program through the Parks and Rec. And, um, I have, uh, happily gotten a June berry tree from them a number of years ago and I'm always telling people about June berries and it's in. They're all ripe right now. If you go over to the Klein Center, it's against in college, there are all those trees out front, those are June berries, you can eat them. And everyone says, what does a June berry taste like? Cuz no one knows. June berry, service berry, saskatoon berry, they're all named the same thing. Anyway, I made some pies. They're in the back and if you wanna try it on the way out, feel free. Um, uh, so thank you Andrea and your crew. And it's the only tree that's approved through the, through the program that is edible, so that's why I have it in front of my house. So those are, that is a Carlisle tree in front of my house that I baked.
Counselor Hicks, can you be?
I love pie. Uh, I have nothing. Additional, thank you.
Counselor Perry.
Um, yes, so two things. Um, I know that the air quality hasn't been, it's been bad the past couple of days. I hope that everyone has, um, been safe and making sure that you're taking care of yourselves. I don't know. If tomorrow is gonna be better or not. If it's not, please make sure that you are taking care of yourselves, especially if you have health issues. Um, and then secondly, um, our Juneteenth is, uh, next Saturday, June seventeenth, and it will be downtown for the first time. We're really excited about that. Um, the Carlisle Theater is going to put us on their marquee for free. So that's really nice. We're excited about it. Um, and it's my last one, people, so come. Come and say bye, well, I'll still be around, but still come and say bye to me as far as being the director of Hope Station. But it's gonna be really good. We have a couple of churches who are going to sell food. So there should be plenty of food there. Um, we're gonna have a band. I forgot the name of the band. But there'll be a, I think they're a jazz band, so it'd be a band there. Um, um, I don't know, all the entertainment that we're having because I was fortunate enough to not have to do it this year. My program assistant has been tasked with that. But, um, and so, and so also to show her, her some support for, you know, putting this together and getting the vendors. So, um, I'm excited about it being downtown. We've never done it downtown before, so we're looking forward to be big. So please come out and support and enjoy us and eat some food. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder, anything from staff? Feel like we should ask the solicitor some questions, but. Um, I, as, as Deputy Mayor alluded to, um, I will be presenting a proclamation for, uh, Pride Month, uh, tomorrow on the. On the steps out, out front at ten, did I say tomorrow? Saturday at ten A M. Don't show up, well, show up tomorrow if you'd like to and stand there and see nothing. Um, or show up on Saturday and I'll present the proclamation at ten A M. Um, then there's a march from there up to the, to the Y W. Uh, so I can get some steps in and hopefully the air quality is cleared up a little bit by then. Uh, and then I might sneak over and see if I can catch the end of the Deputy Mayor's remarks at the reenactment, so see what, see what we can do. Um, and that is all. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.